So I am going to open this meeting, the select board for the town of Hingham. And read the following notice. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised, this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting? Seeing none, it is seven o'clock. The Red Sox and Yankees are about to start their wild card game. And we are going to start our select board meeting.
That's dedication, Joe.
So the first item on our agenda is to consider the request of 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, 428 Lincoln Street, for a change of officer. I believe we have Elizabeth Pisano of Upton, Conell and Devlin here.
Yes, good evening, Elizabeth Pisano here from Upton, Conell and Devlin. This is just a simple officer change. We are requesting that we can remove Goodlow Partey and replace him with Wendy Harkness. And there are no other changes.
And I do see that you submitted a letter, a letter from the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. And it looks to me as if everything is in order. Tom, is this something that our our local police chief would be weighing in on as well?
Not normally. This is a, this is a, just a change at the board level. So this person would actually probably unlikely to step foot in the town of Hingham, I would imagine.
That is true.
Although they are invited, let's be clear.
Of course. Message along.
Bill Ramsey, do you have any questions on the request?
I have no questions. I know it's kind of a procedural. I'm good.
Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Any members of the public have comments on questions on this application? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the request of 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, DBA 99 Restaurants and Pub for a change of officers slash directors. As outlined in the letter from the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, dated August 18, 2021, the commission has reviewed this transaction and found it to be consistent with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 138.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher, aye. It is approved. Elizabeth, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too.
Bye.
Okay, next item on our agenda is to consider the issuance of a limousine license to, and please correct me if I don't pronounce the names correctly. Butanya El Hamari?
Aye, sir.
I'm sorry?
Butanya El Hamri.
El Hamri, also known as Butanya El Hamri. Lecter?
Yes, sir.
DBA, Boston Logan Anywhere Inc. And I, and I see that the two of you are here. So we are proceeding in accordance with guidelines that were adopted by the board at the time. It was the Board of Selectmen in March of 2011, in terms of how these applications should proceed. And our obligation, this board's obligation is to do an initial interview of the owner, after which we may grant a license to that person to operate and provide limousine services for the convenience of persons for hire. So the owner of the of the operation is, I believe, Butanya?
Yes.
Okay. And could you just speak briefly about your experience and what you, how you intend this service to run?
Can I speak behalf of her? Because I'm her husband and also we do together because I'm, I mean, and the business for a long time.
Yes, please go ahead.
All right. Thank you, sir. So I'm gonna do, we're gonna do like airports, like wedding events, all kind of transportation, not taxi. It's only like a limo service.
Right. And how will how will residents be able to contact you to request the service?
I have, we, we, we already doing like a website online. And also, we already have, when, when I, when we live in Waymets, we already have some client already, you know, I mean, we've been, I, we've been in the business for like 10 years now. We just moved to Hingham. And so we already have some business and also we're gonna do like a website.
Great. And I assume you'll have, you'll, you'll post a phone number so that people can also call and order the service.
Yes, sir.
Will will you have a particular location where people go to get your service or it's just you, you, you go to where they are and pick them up?
Yeah, I'm gonna go where they are to pick them up.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, do you have any questions for the applicant?
How long have you been doing this?
I've, I've been in the business since 2015.
Great. And you said you put, it sounds like you service the entire South Shore?
Yes, like South, I mean, like I do the whole Massachusetts, but I'm, I'm located in Hingham.
Great. All right. Excellent. I'm assuming, Tom, everything came back administratively. Okay, the Cory checks and everything?
It did. Thank you. Yep. We did, we did both Cory checks now and everything came back without a problem.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Liz?
Yes, I saw the additional Cory check. So thank you for doing that. No, no questions.
Great. Does our police chief have any comments or questions about this?
Good evening, Joe. No review the application and have a vehicle inspection on file and we are satisfied of no further questions.
And the, the vehicle has commercial plates, a limousine plates for this?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. Any members of the public have any comments or questions on the application? Seeing none, Tom or Michelle, did you have anything you needed to add for this?
Nope. Thank you.
Great. Then I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a limousine license to Butanya Elmrey, also known as Butanya Elmrey Lecker, doing business as Boston Logan Anywhere Incorporated, effective through December 31st, 2021, in accordance with the application for a limousine license on file with the town of Hingham and to approve Monsieur Elmrey as an additional driver.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. It is approved. Thank you both for being here and we look forward to your limousine service in Hingham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one day wine and malt beverages license to Brian Donovan on behalf of Galley Kitchen and Bar for the Mad Love Music Festival to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on October 10th, 2021 from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And is Brian here with us?
Yes, I am.
And Brian, is this like a 60s hippie event or could you describe what's going on here for this Mad Love Music Festival?
So it's a fundraiser for a gentleman, the woman who organized it. It was her husband. He passed away and they raised money for, to put kids into music classes and teach them music. So it's more of like a folk festival. We have food trucks and we provide draft beer and canned beer for them. This is the, besides last year, this would have been, I believe, the eighth year in a row. We've been doing this with them.
And what has been your, your, your experience to date? Any issues or concerns that, that you've had to address?
No, actually none whatsoever. It's more of a family friendly kind of event and it's a lot of families go there.
Yep. And I do note as part of the application, you've included your certificates of completion for E-tips?
Yes.
And has Dave Jones, the police reviewed this?
Good evening again, Joe. We have reviewed it. Like Mr. Donovan said, it's a charity event. It has been held in previous years. We've never had an issue in any other events and there's no issues with the application at all from our point.
Great. What is the expected number of folks who would be attending this? Brian?
They just let me know they have 1,000 tickets sold, which is a little, a little less than two years ago.
That's, that's, that's quite an event. Liz, any questions on this?
No questions. I'm familiar with the event. I think it's always run pretty smoothly and certainly it's, it's very popular with, with families. So good luck. Thank you.
Great. Bill?
I have no questions. I'm, I'm familiar with it as well. And I know it's been successful in the past. So I anticipate being successful again. So good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions about this application? Seeing none and hearing none, I will accept the motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one day wine, wine and malt beverages license to Brian Donovan on behalf of Galley Kitchen and Bar for the Mad Love Music Festival to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on October 10th, 2021, from 11:00 AM, 5:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I do note that there is not a rain date associated with this. We come to vote. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe, aye. It is approved. Thank you very much, Brian.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item to consider is the approval of the issuance of a special one day all alcoholic beverages license to Deirdre Anderson on behalf of the Hingham Historical Society for Tavern Night at the Old Ordinary to be held on October 23rd, 2021 from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Deirdre, are you here?
Thank you. Yes, Chairman, I'm here. Thank you. I'm also joined tonight by Marley McManus, who's our development manager.
Great. So if you could just walk us through what's being proposed?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. The Hingham Historical Society is asking to host its, what would be a third tavern night to celebrate our Old Ordinary property, the House Museum at 21 Lincoln Street. One of Hingham's oldest buildings and for, for many decades, a tavern or an ordinary. So we are hosting a tented party in the parking lot, which would be focused on beer and barbecue and some music. And in the middle of the party, we ask folks to text us a donation to continue the restoration efforts at the Old Ordinary property. If guests like, they may do a short indoor tour of the Old Ordinary where they enter and walk through the historic tavern and then out a side door to the, the tented party. The Hingham Militia joins us for this event and it is a, it has become our, our biggest fundraiser.
And I, I do recall that in past years, it sells out rather quickly.
It does. We, as we delayed the party by a month. We had originally hoped to host the event soon after Labor Day, but given, you know, the tentative nature of our world, we were also wanted to make sure there was no spike in COVID cases with a return to school. And, and we're, we're feeling confident now enough to have released tickets for sale. And so far, so good. They are, they're, they're coming in.
And what is provided in terms of entertainment, music, things like that?
Well, this will be, last year, excuse me, in 2019, we had some sort of session musicians that play at the Snug periodically. And this year, we are also have some volunteer local musicians that will include a vocalist as well as a guitar player, two guitar players. And so that they'll play, you know, perhaps two mini sets. And when they are not playing, we would have a, you know, a phone running music over a PA system in the tent.
Okay, and I will ask Dave Jones if you've got any concerns or questions about the application?
Evening again. Yet this is like the last one is a repeat event. We've had no issues in the past with any of their events and wish them well on this upcoming event and have no issues.
Thank you. Liz?
Chief Jones, do we usually have a police detail for this event?
We do, yes. And they, they have one as well this year.
Okay, great. Excellent. No questions. I'm familiar with the event as well and wish you luck.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, no, I've only questions, but just a comment. It's a great event. It's a great way to celebrate the history of the Old Ordinary. I've been to, I'm glad we can do it again too this year. Obviously last year you can do it with everything going on in the world. So I'm glad the society can do it and I'm looking forward to being there. So good luck, Deirdre.
Thank you so much.
Do any members of the public have comments or questions on this application? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one day all alcoholic beverages license to Deirdre Anderson on behalf of the Hingham Historical Society for Tavern Night at the Old Ordinary to be held on October 23rd, 2021, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
We come to vote. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher, aye. It is approved. Deirdre, we wish you the very best of success.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Next item on our agenda is the fiscal year 22 Senior Means Tested Tax Exemption Amount. And I'll start by turning this over to our town administrator, Tom Mayo.
Thank you very much, Joe. Before we get into this particular agenda item, we have, you all see Erin Walsh, our town assessor is here. We have Chrissy Roberts and Josh Ross from the Board of Assessors here. I think it would be appropriate at this moment to take a minute to remember, to remember their fellow board member. So I'm just gonna read something here. I just want to make sure that I get it right. So it is with great sadness that I share the news that our friend and recently retired chairman of the Board of Assessors, Stuart Greg Hall, passed away on September 29th at the age of 98. Greg was on the Board of Assessors for the past 35 years and was an integral part of both the board and the town of Hingham. He was invested in the town and joined the board to give back to the community. Greg lived in a way that inspired people with determination, optimism and a love of life. I personally had the great pleasure to know Greg and will say that he was always smiling and telling jokes. And he will be greatly missed by all of those who knew him and that our town is a better place for his involvement in the local government. So, you know, I personally am going to miss Greg. I think that you know, the Board of Assessors certainly will miss his expertise, his knowledge, his, his, his history. And I know that Erin will miss her friend. So.
Just, Tom, thank you. And, you know, this is someone who is highly regarded, not just by the Board of Assessors, but really by the town at large. And we will all miss him. Thank you.
So Erin, Erin can take, yes, agenda item if you'd like, Joe?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. And yes, and I, I'm gonna miss Greg tremendously. And like you said, he was not just a board member, but he was a very close friend. So yeah, we're gonna miss him a lot. But I'm here to talk about the, the means tested senior real estate exemption, which the effort to bring this exemption to Hingham seniors began in 2019 and we're so happy to finally see it applied as it was intended. The requirements of the exemption are as follows. You must be over the age of 65 by December 31st of 2020. You must be a resident of Hingham for 10 years. Your income must meet the 2020 state circuit breaker limits. For a single person, that's 61,000, for the head of household, 76,000, and for joint applicants, 92,000. You must have applied for and received the Massachusetts State Circuit Breaker Tax Credit in 2020. Your homeowner's principal residence assessment is not to exceed $848,000. The applicant must not have excessive assets that place them outside of the intended recipient of this particular exemption. So this year, the Assessor's Office began on April 1st by creating the applications, the instructions and the worksheet for this exemption. And then on May 1st, the applications were available to the public. We advertised the exemption on our website and the Hingham Anchor, the Central Times, which is the senior newsletter, on the local cable channel, Hingham Public Access, as well as on social media. And September 1st was the deadline for filing the exemption. So the total number of applicants that we received was 24 this year. And of those 20 were approved by the board. So the total amount of the circuit breaker tax credit of the approved applicants is $21,201 in total. Which brings us here tonight where the select board shall annually set the exemption amount and the amount of the exemption shall be within the range of 50% to 100% of the amount of the circuit breaker tax credit. So although the total number of applicants seems quite low this year, we're encouraged by the, the amount of people that inquired about the exemption and are hopeful that more people will apply next year. They now know that they would have to apply for the circuit breaker tax credit on their taxes in 2022. So we're optimistic that the number of applicants will increase next year and those that did apply expressed their gratitude for the town of Hingham that they offered this exemption that was aimed at this particular age group and income bracket. These people have talked about how this will assist them in staying in their homes and how this exemption will alleviate the pressure of increasing taxes.
This is a question for Erin, you or Tom or Michelle. What was the projected amount that we budgeted for this exemption?
We had budgeted about $500,000 off the assumption, when we got numbers from the State Department of Revenue that over, I want to say 350 people in Hingham are at least of the most recent numbers from 2018, 2019, more than 350 people in Hingham are eligible for this amount. So if all of those folks apply or that number continues to grow, then we would have budgeted to be able to provide 100% of the exemption to everyone who qualified.
So we are, you know, significantly below the budgeted amount. And I'm not seeing any reason that we wouldn't vote for, or vote for 100% of, of the exemption amount. Are there, and Erin, this, this is perhaps a question for you. Are there things we should be doing now so that next year, perhaps we can increase the awareness of eligible residents of this opportunity?
I think that really the advertising is how, and I think a lot of word of mouth will, as, as people are, a lot of people have called in and said, I heard about this. But again, they couldn't qualify because they didn't on their taxes apply for the circuit breaker tax credit. So it could be that next year they do and then they'll be eligible. So I don't know that there's much more we can do in terms of advertising.
Joe, I have one idea if you'd like.
Sure.
So Erin, the, and I, and Joe, it's a great question to ask. I haven't thought of it in that term, those terms before, but I know down the senior center, Jennifer Young has a gentleman that comes in and offers to help seniors with their tax returns. So perhaps we could make him know that that person aware of the program to make sure that, you know, when he's doing tax returns, he does them in a way that folks are, that otherwise would be eligible are.
Yes, great.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you. Liz, do you have any questions on this?
I was just gonna comment on, on the same thing. It sounds like Erin, you did a fair amount of outreach. So maybe just earlier in the process before taxes are due would, would be helpful. But I think this is, is a great program and I'm glad that Hingham is, is able to do it. Thank you for all your work.
Yes. Bill?
A couple of questions. So Erin, the guidelines for the exemption, did the town meeting set those or do they come from the legislature?
I believe they, they come from the legislature.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the assessed value and the total income, that's all come through the legislature?
That's based on the, the tax circuit breaker credit that they filed for. So those, those are already in place. We didn't establish the, the assessment or anything like that. That was already established by the state.
I'm just wondering if there's some way we can increase eligibility for folks. But I'll look into that with, with Tom and Michelle. Maybe we could lower the amount somehow. I mean, it, that, some of the, some of the numbers are high, I think. And you know, obviously we live in a community where assessed values of homes is very high. And that's going to disqualify a lot of people who probably could benefit from this exemption. So something to look at and certainly agree with Joe on, on, on the awareness, you know, as a board, the three of us need to do a better job getting, getting, making people aware of this. I commonly hear from seniors about affordability concerns, staying in town. So I think this is a wonderful program and like to see us get closer to the 350 if we have the budget for it. So we'll look at that going forward. But thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Bill, so there are specific requirements, I think, beyond what was discussed. So for, if you are a homeowner, then your property tax, together with half of your water and sewer expense, has to exceed 10% of your Massachusetts income during the year. If you're a renter, 25% of your rent has to exceed 10% of your Massachusetts income for the year. Those are all state mandates that we do not have the ability to, to alter.
Good to know. Thank you.
Do any members of the public have comments or questions? Chrissy? You raised your hand? There we go.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I couldn't unmute it first. Now I could. I just wanted to quickly chime in on that last point where we did have some discretion with the amount of assets. Some towns, they capped the assets at, I think, Erin, 250. And we said, we decided, no, we wanted to say not unreasonable assets. So we just used wording that gave us some discretion because we are an affluent town to try to grant this to more people than we would have.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have? Yes.
Joe, before we recognize Josh and Josh, I hate to do this to you. But did you guys post for this meeting? I, you're technically a quorum. And if you're both discussing this, I'd hate to have a violation. Right now you haven't had a deliberation. So Josh, I'm not trying to stop you from talking, but I, you just want to be careful. Where Chrissy just opined on something, you'd hate to offer an opinion and then that's a deliberation.
Yeah, we did not post it. And I didn't think of that until I saw Josh on the line and said, it was the last minute realizing this was on the agenda and jumping in. So sorry if I shouldn't have said anything at all.
It was one of the two of you got to speak. Whoever rose their hand first, raise their hand.
Gotcha.
Sorry, Joe.
Such a rule breaker. Sorry, Tom.
Anyone else have a comment or question? Who's allowed to speak? I, I think we have a four-legged creature that wanted to voice their opinion.
River board, Joe, so.
So the question before our board is what the percentage should be? The percentage of the amount of the circuit breaker income tax credit that we should be voting for. So I I see no reason that it would be less than a hundred percent, given the the dollar amounts at issue here. So I am prepared to accept the motion on this.
I make a motion to set the FY twenty two senior means tested tax exemption amount at one hundred percent of the amount of the circuit breaker income tax credit in accordance with section three of chapter three eighty one of the Acts of two thousand twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Aaron, I really appreciate the explanation and your your work on this.
Thank you very much.
And next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the extension to the grant agreement with Hingham Community Access and Media. And I believe we've got Kathy Riley and Laura Burns here. This is for a six month extension.
If you if you like, I could tee it up, Joe.
Please.
So this is a six month, six month extension. We have a multi-year agreement with Harbor Media to provide public access for the town, public access television for the town. Laura and her team at at Harbor Media had put this before me. Frank frankly, it was at least a couple of months ago. I misplaced it. It was in the folder and was thinking it was something else and I kept forgetting to bring it back to you guys. And then it got past the September fifteenth deadline by the time I realized it. So what I'm asking you to consider on behalf of Harbor Media is that you consider extending their grant agreement for six months beginning September sixteenth, two thousand twenty two.
So this is, this would be retroactive back to September six, September sixteenth of two thousand twenty one and then going until March fifteenth of two thousand twenty two.
That's right.
Okay. So is there anyone from Hingham Community Access and Media that would like to speak on this?
Hi, I'm Michelle Valcony, Executive Director for Harbor Media. Hello to everyone. We agree with Tom. Thank you for bringing that forward. We would like a six month extension on our existing agreement as we are going through a review process now. With the town.
Yeah, and that's the other thing I forgot to mention. I'm in, we're in the throes of reviewing their prior contract or their prior prior their performance under the prior agreement. That's in the final stages of review right now. And as that wraps up, we'll begin negotiations for the next agreement, which frankly should be done in a relatively short period of time. We likely won't need anywhere near the six months.
Okay. Is there any finite, what not, is there any, what is the financial impact to the town for doing the six month extension?
None.
And how is that possible?
Well, the the the, in theory, we would have extended the agree or had a new agreement by September fifteenth. So everyone would have been working under that, under that new agreement, which would have extended the so which would have extended similar terms to this in that they would be using cable funds to operate. They're going to continue to use cable funds to operate at the same percentage that they were prior to the extension.
Okay. Excellent. Bill? Do you have any questions on this?
You know, I think Kathy had her hand up. No, okay, she don't guess. I just want to know if you're sorry, Joe. Okay, great. No, no question at all. Obviously, HCM is a wonderful resource for our community. Really appreciate their their coverage of our our meetings and all the meetings and getting word out to people about what's going on in town government and community events. So I'm all on board with the extension.
Great. Liz?
Agreed. No questions on the six month extension. And I know the review was happening, so look forward to to working on that.
Any member of the public have a comment or question? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to sign the extension to the grant agreement with Hingham Community Access and Media Incorporated effective until March fifteenth, two thousand twenty two.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye. It is approved.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Green Communities Competitive Grant. We'll get an update and certification of application. Art? If you could walk us through this, please?
Absolutely. Good evening to all members of the board and all folks who are viewing. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to to present to you. I'll be just building on the materials that we provided to you previously. As you know, Hingham became a green community recognized by the State Department of Energy Resources in two thousand eighteen, receiving funds in exchange for a commitment to reducing energy consumption by by twenty percent over five years. In a first round of funding, the town put to work about a hundred and forty two thousand dollars worth of grant support to execute three projects, two in schools and one led by our DPW that were recently completed that helped the the town take important steps in this direction. We are now amid a new round of competitive grant funding as an opportunity extended by DOE R. And with an application due this coming Friday, the eighth of February, I've been working very closely with Michelle Monseager, who's done some outstanding work moving this program forward up to this point. Working very closely with the the schools as well as our facilities maintenance team on the town side to define two projects to pursue funding. Under this solicitation, we have the opportunity to compete for up to two hundred thousand dollars in grant funding. And we have defined two projects, two LED lighting retrofit projects in the high school as well as town hall that we project at this point to have a a a projected cost of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I say it's projected because while we have many project details, we don't have them all at this time. They'll certainly be coming together over the next few days in a form that we will be submitting electronically to the state. In the materials that I shared with you, I did include a certification document. Essentially, the senior executive of of a community has asked to certify an application for grant funding to to DOE R. We expect that this is a very competitive process. We expect that DOE R will take more likely take months than weeks to review applications. But we're optimistic that we'll 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 see a decision in in funding recommendations made by made by DOE R before the years out. Pending your questions, I would ask that you would consider consider a motion that would allow for signing certification.
Great. So Art, you you mentioned the initial grant of about a hundred and forty two thousand dollars. Do you know, did the town receive those funds or are they still in the process of being received?
The town received those funds and fully put them. The three projects I described earlier have been deployed in our operational and reducing the town's energy consumption.
So I I I just don't know the process is for, is this a process where we receive the money and then spend it or we spend it and then get the money back from the state?
That's a fair question. I would expect that this would be a reimbursement grant like most state grants are.
Okay, great. And then you said that we would be filing or submitting our grant application electronically. I would just suggest that after it's filed electronically, we do some sort of follow up. Other towns have thought they filed things electronically and it turned out it wasn't received and then they missed out on the grant opportunity. So whatever whatever process we need to follow so that we do follow up on electronic submissions, I would urge urge you to to do. Liz, do you have any questions on this?
I I just had a clarifying question. Art, I was a little confused on the timeline. So the the new projects, part of the block two, has have those projects already been complete?
Well, if if we're referring to projects that were funded in a prior grant round, the answer is yes. Those are the three projects I described earlier.
Okay.
We're now proposing is funding for two new projects.
Got it. Okay, so all of the prior had to be complete by September third and then these are two new ones.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Great. Bill?
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation, Art. And so just to reiterate, so the the application we're applying for now would just transfer all the lighting currently in town hall and high school to LED lighting. Is that correct?
At this stage, the 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 scope of the of the retrofits aren't finalized. Certainly in town hall, we're looking at most of the space except for the dispatch center, which has its own lighting requirements.
Sure.
For the high school, we're looking at much of the interior lighting as well as some exterior lighting. I just haven't seen the specifics of the school proposal, so I can't. I can't be more specific than that. But what we will do is is to share a one or two page summary of the final project with you.
Excellent.
So you understand all the details.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And Art, it's this is really great that this is something that's not a town side. It's not a school side. It's both. And doing these grants as a united town for both the municipal side and the school side is really it's a great way to go. So thank you for pulling this together. Do any members of the public have comments or questions on this application? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
Make a motion authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign the Green Communities Certificate of of Application to allow the town of Hingham to apply for a Green Communities Competitive Grant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We now vote. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye. It is approved. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to designate an authorized recipient and an authorized preparer to Plymouth County's American Rescue Plan Act, which is the ARPA program. Michelle, would you like to walk us through this?
So Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien held a helpful webinar early last week and Liz and I and Sue Nickerson attended it. The county is intending to make available to the member municipalities some funds through the American Rescue Plan Act. These would be in addition to the funds that Hingham received directly from the state that we've put towards the FY twenty two budget. That we're able to use them for certain specific uses. And one of those uses is water, sewer and broadband infrastructure to provide for premium pay for essential workers to replace municipal revenue that was lost due to the pandemic. And then also a pretty broad category of supporting the COVID nineteen public health response and addressing some of the negative economic impacts of COVID nineteen. The initial allocation available through Plymouth County is about one point one million dollars to the town of Hingham. And the county has launched a portal online on its website to where all the member municipalities can apply for funds for specific profit proper projects that meet these requirements. The first step in being eligible to do that is to have the select board take these votes, authorizing one person and we're recommending that it be Tom, the town administrator, as the authorized representative to to file for and receive those funds. And then a second person, the town accountant, Sue Nickerson, to be the preparer of those materials. And she's done that through for the cares program with Plymouth County and is very familiar with them and has worked very closely with them. Shortly before this meeting, I heard back from Tom O'Brien and he gave me some specific vote language. I sent that to the board probably at six thirty PM. So I just want to make sure that that you are looking at that potential vote language. But it would be wonderful to be able to access these funds and we can work with the school department as we start to figure out what we might want to apply for and as we keep track of how much money is available to the town through this program. These funds are available through calendar year two thousand twenty four, so there's no rush. But we do want to think carefully about how to use this one time funding.
Michelle, when would these funds be dispersed to the town?
It would, they would do it through a reimbursement process, the way that we have done cares through them. Plymouth County is taking on the burden of they have hired two audit firms and one legal team to help them figure out all of the reporting requirements, which makes it much easier on our end to to access these funds through them. I am not quite sure. I think it depends on when we get our project materials in, but I'm not quite sure in the turnaround time for the first, you know, the initial applications.
So which fiscal year budgets would be potentially impacted by these funds?
They're available through calendar year twenty four, so that potentially goes, well, they have to be obligated by the end of calendar year twenty four, but expended by the end of calendar year twenty six. So that actually extends into the first half of FY twenty seven.
Yep. Okay. Great. Liz? Any questions on this?
No questions.
Bill?
Of course, I just know that, you know, we are we potentially eligible for a lot of ARPA funds. Cares was a big help to us, obviously, last year with our budget. And I think ARPA can be a great resource for us as well. So let's see what we can do and any any money we can get for federal money we can get is always helpful to us and trying to get our budget good to go and help our schools out.
Yes.
And for the record, Joe, I'm always willing to be the recipient of millions of dollars. Anytime.
You you'll be the authorized rep. I don't know about the.
That's a good.
Any member of the public have comments or questions on this? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion, noting that we should be using the most recent revised vote list for this purpose.
Thank you.
Someone prepared to make the motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to designate the town administrator as the authorized representative on behalf of the town of Hingham to apply for certify and receive American Rescue Plan Act Program Funds through the county of Plymouth, Massachusetts.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye. It's approved.
I'll accept a second motion.
Liz, do you mind making it out? I don't have the the.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to designate the town accountant as the authorized preparer and filer on behalf of the town of Hingham for American Rescue Plan Act Program Funds through the county of Plymouth, Massachusetts.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you. And Tom and Michelle, thank you for staying on top of this.
Michelle was lead on this. Great job, Michelle.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to discuss and potentially vote regarding the First Amendment to the Feasibility Study Agreement between the Town of Hingham and the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the William L. Foster Elementary School Project. Is John Ferris on?
Looks like we have Ray Estes from the Building Committee in place of Mr. Ferris.
I, the two of them do not look similar at all. So Ray?
That is a compliment, Joe.
I I almost went in that direction and I refrained. So if you could walk us through this, please. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks. Ray Estes, ninety two Ford Hill Street, Vice Chair of the School Building Committee. Yeah, I figured I'd give John the evening off. And pinch it. This is a a simple one. Really, it's a it's an administrative item. Clerical error on behalf of the MSBA, which does happen from time to time. I believe it's just a an incorrect date that reflected a two thousand twenty one date rather than a two thousand twenty two date. This is a feasibility study agreement that was, I believe, executed back in February of two thousand twenty one, which details the timing for the for when the MSBA would enter into essentially a project funding agreement for this project, which would be no earlier than than July one, two thousand twenty two. And the original agreement had a typographical error.
It it had twenty twenty one. Exactly. Yeah, and I've I've reviewed the amendment and I think it's exactly as you've described it. And as soon as we get this vote, I can sign it and move forward. Liz? Any questions?
No questions. I reviewed it as well. And I think John Coughlin reviewed it as well. So no, no questions. Thank you.
Bill?
I know the motion just correct, as Ray pointed out, describes our so ready to go when you are.
Any member of the public have a comment or question on this? Any member of the public have a comment or question on this? Seeing none, I will accept the motion.
I make a motion, authorize the Chair of the Select Board to execute the First Amendment to the Feasibility Study Agreement between the town of Hingham and the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, for the William L. Foster Elementary School project project, and to sign any further amendments or other documents as may be required by the MSBA relating to this project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. It is approved unanimously. Thank you.
And Ray, thank you for the very succinct presentation.
Thank you, Ray.
Great. I don't, I do not believe we have any talent bank applications, appointments to make this evening, so we can move on to the COVID nineteen update.
Great. Thank you very much, Joe. So this will be brief, but for our COVID nineteen update tonight, statewide, the number of new COVID nineteen cases has been trending downward since mid-September. Obviously, good news. We are seeing a slight decrease in COVID nineteen cases in Hingham over the last few weeks. There were twenty-three new cases during the two-week period ending September twenty-fifth, compared to thirty-five new cases for the period ending nine eighteen. The vaccination rate for Hingham remains at seventy-two percent, compared to the state average of approximately sixty-six percent. And if you look only at vaccine-eligible individuals in Hingham, people aged twelve and over, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents remains at eighty-five percent. So we are very proud of our high vaccination rate here in Hingham, and we want to make sure that we thank everyone for continuing to take steps to protect themselves and others from COVID nineteen. That's it.
Thank you, Tom. Liz, any questions on the COVID nineteen update?
One question. Tom, what do we need to do to get information out about booster shots for people that are eligible?
Yeah, as that program becomes clearer, our ability to inform folks of what to do and how to get them will become clear. We had that discussion today in part in today's Command Group call. It's still a little bit fuzzy as to who is eligible for what. It will depend, obviously, on the pharmaceutical company that you got your initial shots in. I believe that boosters are being approved for Pfizer ahead of Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson, and you know, we have been contacted by the state to see if if the state so deemed it would be appropriate, whether or not we would be interested and able to organize vaccination clinics for both boosters and children. The five-to-eleven-year-old age groups that they're talking about, that's all still pending. So, you know, as more information comes in, we will, to answer your specific question about how we can get the information out to the public, I think we will probably continue to do it in our normal fashion, which would be over the website in our COVID nineteen section. I would hope that something that important, we could speak with the Journal about, with Carol, and try to get something out on the Journal, and you know, it's got to be done through our social media outreach efforts that we have available to us, the town's Facebook page, our Twitter account, to the extent that that's read. So there's a few avenues, but.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Bill, any questions?
First of all, my apologies, my video went down on me, but I have no questions. Thank you.
Any member of the public, comments or questions? None? Great. Tom, thank you. Moving to the public comment, are there any members of the public who have comments on items not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we move to the Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Tom, do you have anything?
Not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Michelle?
Nothing. Thank you.
Art?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Just a couple of announcements. I know we heard about the Mad Love Festival this weekend. It's also homecoming at Hingham High, so that there's games all weekend. Football game on Saturday at three thirty, and then the Hingham Downtown Association is hosting Arts Walk next weekend, October seventeenth.
And I, we would all encourage folks to attend that. It really is a great event for the town.
Yes.
And I just point out, it's nice to plan that without having to worry about COVID nineteen restrictions on outdoor events like we did last year. So like Joe said, please attend.
Bill?
Thank you, Joe. I have no updates tonight. Thank you.
I have one item I just wanted to comment on. There is an organization known as the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail. That organization has a twofold mission, is to celebrate, educate, and anticipate Irish contributions to the South Shore and to benefit the economy of member towns through increased tourism. The South Shore Irish Heritage Trail includes the towns of Hull, Cohasset, Situate, Marshfield, Ducksbury, Kingston, Plymouth, Weymouth, and Hingham. And they are having organizational meeting coming up in October, and I have asked one of the leading Irish residents of our town, Mary Ellen McGuire Eisen, to go as our emissary to report back on the organization's activities, and to the extent that we can support the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail. And with that, I've got nothing else. I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. We are adjourned.